President time.
Interim Chair Lindsay, the public has been admitted.
Thank you, City Manager Sizland. I would like to call to order the October 20th, 2021 meeting of the City of Gross Point Park Planning Commission. First order of business is to call the role. Commissioners and members of the commission, when you hear your name, if you could please respond. Commissioner Amy Chesterton.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Coletta.
Here.
Commissioner Matthew Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine San Per. Commissioner San Per, if you could unmute yourself.
Here, sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Vitaki.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
City Manager Sizland.
Here.
And I believe we have, we don't have City Attorney Howell it here tonight, but we do have one of our city attorneys present.
Yep, Erica Shell present.
Thank you, Erica. All right, with everyone in attendance, our first agenda item is the approval of the April 21st meeting minutes of the planning commission. Have all of the commissioners received the minutes and had a chance to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. If anyone has any comments or corrections they'd like to make, please state those. Hearing none, if anyone would like to make a motion to approve the April 21st meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Chesterton. Thank you, and do I have a second?
Second.
Support.
Okay, support by both Commissioner Coletta and Councilmember Hodges. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the meeting minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is public comment for agenda items. City Manager Sizland, do we have any public comments for this evening?
Thank you, interim Chair Lindsay. At this time, I have no public comment on the agenda items.
Okay. All right, moving to the next item on our agenda, new business. Section A is the selection of the interim chair and vice chair of the commission. I'm going to turn that over to City Manager Sizland.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Malik Goodwin has resigned from the planning commission. And so at this time, prior to, Michelle Lindsay was the vice chair of the planning commission. And so for the rest of the planning commission year, we need to select a chair and a vice chair. And so with that said, this will be up for the committee for their consideration and approval of the chair for the planning commission for the rest of calendar year 2021 first. Any nominations?
City Manager Sizland, this is Amy Chesterton. I think Michelle Lindsay is doing a fabulous job in her role as as chair of this commission, and I would like to nominate her to continue that role from interim to permanent.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion is passed. You are now the Chair Lindsay. Okay. With that said, we now need to select a vice chair for the planning commission. Is there a a motion for support for somebody?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Chesterton for vice commissioner, or vice chair rather.
Okay, all right, all those in favor of Vice Chair Chesterton, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is passed, and now we have Vice Chair Chesterton.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Sizland. All right, moving on to the next order of business. New business section B, we have master plan review, and I believe we have a presentation from Anne Marie Kirby.
Start my video here. Everybody see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. All right, I just want to say good evening to everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Anne Marie Kirby, planner with MKSK and project manager for the master plan update. Joining me tonight, I have Kevin Miller, who is also planner with MKSK and has been helping out with this effort. And he'll be presenting a few of the slides that you're going to see tonight. So before we get started, I'd like to run through the different ways you can provide feedback. During the meeting, we'll have live polling questions throughout the presentation. And you'll be able to vote on different options, and then we'll share those results live. The meeting is also being recorded and will be posted to the city's website, as well as the project website, which are both listed here. And after today's meeting, there will be additional ways for you to get input or for others to give feedback that were not able to join us tonight. A survey is going to be released by early next week. It can be accessed on the project website. The city will also send out this information via social media, and then there'll be a paper version available at City Hall for you to take it by hand. And then you can email your comments to the city manager at the email address listed here. And if you haven't had a chance yet, please visit the project website to view the draft master plan document. So tonight, we will be giving a brief overview of the overall timeline and planning process, including a summary of engagement efforts. And then the main portion of this evening will be diving into the plan recommendations, as well as the overall vision for the future of Gross Point Park and the goals and objectives that will help implement that vision. So I want to show the timeline here of the planning process so far. We began the effort in January, and now we're in the final few months of the planning process. The last task of the project is reviewing the draft master plan and then proceeding into the adoption process. Adoption of the plan is projected for January or February. There is a 63-day comment period that's required by the state. And that's going to occur before the public hearing with planning commission. So that will likely commence either later this month or November, depending on when that goes to city council. And then that would end sometime in late December or early January. And then at the end of that, at the end of the presentation, I have a slide that's going to show the next steps in this process to kind of give you more details on the adoption portion of the project process. So I'll get into that in a little bit. Every five years, a master plan update is required for the Michigan Planning Act of 2008. This requires communities in Michigan to revisit their existing master plans to determine if updates need to be made. For those on the call that may not know the full background, the city began updating the master plan with a local committee of volunteers in 2019, and then the city council made the recommendation that consultants should be brought in to help out with the effort, bring some more expertise, and also have the capacity to help engage the community in the process. We used the previous draft as a starting point, and then began to identify challenges, opportunities, priorities in the community and stakeholders. The draft master plan is split into a handful of sections. The introduction, which explains why you should have a master plan, and it's important to serve as a guiding tool for future decisions the city makes. And then we've included a section on engagement, so how the city, how the community was engaged, and then what kind of feedback you obtained. And then existing conditions were also incorporated. This really shows like where you've been, and then where you might be heading, and also helps inform the recommendations in the plan. And then we have the draft recommendations, which covers future land use, zoning, transportation, sustainability, among other topics. And then finally, the action plan, which includes overall vision for the city, as well as goals and strategies. And I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, and he's going to talk about the summary of each one of this process.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Everyone can hear me? So here's the summary of the engagement efforts that have taken place throughout the planning process, which included the community visioning session that took place virtually back in February, where we discussed the planning process, existing conditions, and began to identify your priorities for improvement. And the survey was also released, a survey was also released back in February and closed in March, and was available online as well as by paper. Alongside the survey, there was also an interactive map that was on our project website, which allowed the users to place comments and ideas on the map of the community. Then in May, we had our first in-person event at Windmill Point Park, where tables and displays were set up so that people could safely social distance and participate in the process. And the meeting was a continuation of identifying the priorities and was an opportunity for those who did join the process earlier to give their input and be able to ask those questions first. Now, we're going to kind of pause here and take our first poll, just to get an idea of how many of you have been participating in the process so far. So here we have our first question. For it, we just want to know what community engagement events you have been participating in. As well as our second question, where we want to know if you have looked at the draft master plan yet.
No, is everyone seeing the polling questions on their screen?
Anne Marie, this is Amy Chesterton. I attempted to do it myself and got a notice that the poll was closed already.
We just created these, so I'm not sure why that would be in place. I'll try to rewatch here. So maybe try again, see if it works. There we go. I'll just give about 10 more seconds here. So it looks like for those who responded, quite a few of you have participated, and and most of these options, and the highest one being the survey, and it looks like most of you have read or at least browsed for the draft master plan.
So there are more details listed within the master plan, but we just wanted to show a quick summary of what the engagement efforts have led to in terms of identifying priorities in the community. So we asked the community about their top priority improvements for Growth Point Park, and these were the top five that were chosen. They were parks and recreation opportunities, sidewalk repairs and maintenance, underground infrastructure, storm wire management, and early childhood services. In addition to these, people also had the opportunity to list out other items they felt needed addressing, and these were the common ones that were listed. They were business districts, better communication and transparency, and diversity. And within the business districts themselves, the top priority overall included developing vacant property, improving public parking, and enhancing the street groups. And now I'll turn it back to Anne Marie.
Great, thanks Kevin. So one of the most important tools from the master plan is the future land use map. This is going to provide the guidance on future land use, zoning, planning, development decision-making in Gross Point Park. And out of this, we created character areas, which you'll see here on the screen. And each of these have unique development characteristics and guidelines, including permitted uses, parking, open spaces. And we divided it into kind of four general categories. Neighborhoods, business districts, parks, and institutions, and the neighborhoods have two different subcategories. And then one of the items we heard back on during this process was the need for creating design guidelines for infill and re-Dev. When Evans, who was an architecture firm, was part of our project team, and they drafted up the residential and commercial design guidelines that were in the master plan. So for the residential areas of the city, the guidelines were split up by lot sizes, since the character of those areas do vary. So we wanted to be sure that the guidelines were matching and consistent. And guidelines were then created to address the massing and scale of buildings, facades, and quality materials, things like porches, windows and doors, location, park gate, landscaping. And I actually want to have another stopping point here for another poll, just to kind of get your feedback on what you feel the top priority guidelines are for residential buildings in Gross Point Park. And again, you can choose more than one option here. And I'll give about 20 more seconds for you to respond. Miss Tewell tell us if there's additional guidelines we might need to add in here, or other things we need to address as we're kind of making revisions to the master plan. So looks at the top category was quality materials and building facades. It's very important to you, as well as massing and scale of those buildings. Right. And now moving on to business districts and areas and those recommendations. So through a combination of our own observations and comments we heard from stakeholders and residents, we put together a summary of recommended actions for each of the business districts. Business districts were noted as a top priority item to address in the master plan. And so part of that was identifying what is working for each business district and where can we make improvements to be prioritized. So you'll see with each one of these, we rated the overall prioritize items that should be focused on. The preserve category means these are well-established and thriving areas that are expected to remain relatively the same. Curitible overall was categorized as preserved, but I'll show you in a few slides some recommendations that would still be made for that district for improvements. Enhance means areas that may need enhancing upgrades to building facades or low-cost changes to a street. Jefferson, and then the MAC, Cadu business area, were both categorized as this. And then finally, for the invest category, this is where you might have more targeted redevelopment opportunities, more vacant and underutilized properties. So Charlotte Boy and MAC are both categorized in this section. And now I'm just going to briefly dive into each of these recommendations. This will just be an overview for each district, so keep in mind, I'll also be presenting transportation recommendations after this section. So although some of those are included here as well, but I will be talking about transportation recommendations too. So for Jefferson, most of this business district is categorized as preserved and enhanced, including libraries, city hall, which should be preserved, as well as a number of other businesses. Existing crosswalks should be enhanced along here to increase pedestrian visibility and also make sure they are ADI compliant. We're also recommending that some businesses upgrade their signage and facades to be consistent with the design guidelines that I'll go over shortly with you. And then we also noted that the proposed SCAP Center site is targeted for reinvestment and support. And Curitible is classified to as mostly preserved. There are many businesses that have well-designed storefronts, besides signage and perch, pedestrian activity. However, some signage and facade upgrades are recommended along here. Parking lots could be upgraded with more screening and landscaping. The intersection of labor and curitibles recommended to be reconfigured to be safer, especially for pedestrians. And then activating a few vacant storefronts that remain along here with mixed-use buildings that match the character in business districts. For Charlotte Boy, this is noted mostly as an area where there are more investment opportunities. There are empty lots and vacant buildings that could be repurposed with mixed-use developments. There are many, there are some existing businesses along here that have quality facades and have activated their storefronts, have pedestrian accommodations like seating. And then we also are recommending that the streetscape should be upgraded along here as well. MAC is another district where we have noted that there are investment opportunities. There's a lot of underutilized parking here that could serve as property for infill redevelopment. And some parking lot curb cuts could be narrowed in some locations to help make it safer for pedestrians along here. The new streetscape elements here have already kind of laid a framework for those reinvestment opportunities along that. And then, just like we did for residential buildings, we created guidelines for commercial buildings, including signage standards, guidelines for pedestrian seating and windows, massing and scale of buildings, and then using quality materials. So again, I'm just going to go ahead and open up the poll for commercial buildings, and just want to ask you what you feel the top priority guidelines are for commercial buildings in Gross Point Park. Give you about 30, 40 seconds here to respond. About five, 10 more seconds. So quality building materials came up as a top answer. Followed by storefront entries and signage were also very important to people. Moving on into transportation recommendations. One of the main topics, her comments about is making enhancements and improvements to the transportation system in Gross Point Park. Map that's on here is a collection of recommendations for pedestrian crossings, for new crossings, but also enhancing existing crossings, adding bike facilities to select corridors in the city, enhancing bus stops, as well as creating flexible curb side amenities for outdoor seating for restaurants, for example. I'm going to show you recommendations for each of the targeted corridors that can be incorporated. So for MAC, we have a few different options that could be considered to make improvements to the road. In existing conditions, MAC is quite wide and intimidating for bikers and pedestrians. Also, there are very few crosswalks along MAC. So on the previous map, we have recommendations for mid-block crossings along MAC as well. So option A, you see here, shows lanes being narrowed from 12 feet to 10 feet, but keeping all the lanes, including the center turn lane, keeping parking, but then shifting it off the curbs, so there's room for bike lanes and buffers. Option B shows MAC being repurposed and narrowed to three lanes, and keeping parallel parking, and also including a bike lane buffer. And then option C is a median option with angle parking. And a note for for these, these are all conceptual. Any of these options would require coordination with county who owns MAC, as well as the city of Detroit, to flesh out the design and implement these options. For Curitible, we show existing conditions within the business district and in front of the school, as well as just east of the school. So we kind of separated these out. Within the business district, it's recommended that bike sharrows and signage be placed to promote sharing the street with bikes. And then parking would remain. It could also, the parking spaces could also be used seasonally in some locations for that flexible temporary outdoor seating space, and we recognize that's already being done in some locations too. And then outside of the business district, we show bike lanes with buffers, and then the travel lanes would be 11 feet wide at each side. For Charlotte Boy, we are recommending some new crosswalks along here. Adding bike sharrows and bike signage, as well as adding additional bike parking in the district. And that's the same for the rest of the districts too, is adding bike parking where possible. Along Jefferson, again, crosswalks are recommended to be enhanced, and some new ones are suggested to be added as well. There's potential to add a shared use pathway along the north side of Jefferson within the business district. And then outside of the business district boundaries, there's a possibility to add bike lanes on Jefferson if the travel lanes are narrow to accommodate them. Again, Jefferson, just like MAC, county-owned road, and also connects to Detroit and the city of Gross Point. So coordinating with those entities would be critical. And then we also have Windmill Point Drive on here. We heard from some people that the addition of a pathway within the existing median would allow bikers and pedestrians to stay out of the street. But this may be considered a lower priority corridor target, since this is more of a residential street. Doesn't have as much high bounds of traffic as other corridors, but is still something to consider. And we incorporated sustainability recommendations in the master plan to help protect natural resources and encourage more sustainable practices within the city of Gross Point Park. And we also noted in the existing condition section of the plan about the Gross Point Park flooding events that occurred over the summer, and the steps the city is already taking to help address some of those issues. And some of the recommendations in the plan include replacing the lead water service line to comply with new Michigan regulations, addressing and improving storm and sanitary sewer flow reflection, adding electric vehicle charging stations in city parking lots, shifting to adding more green infrastructure in the city, especially in parking lots and within the right of way, and then launching a program for recycling education. Another key component of the master plan is having a zoning plan in place. So the zoning plan identifies where the zoning ordinance and zoning map may be inconsistent with the updated master plan. For Gross Point Park, recommendations for changes to the zoning ordinance and map include creating a more organized zoning ordinance that is streamlined and user-friendly. We recommend adding some updated graphics to help explain dimensional standards. We've also included some zoning map recommendations. And while it's mostly appropriate for Gross Point Park, the map could use some updates. Recommended that a district be created to help protect the civic and park uses that are in Gross Point Park. And then the parking and office service districts are recommended to be removed. And then those properties can be rezoned to local business to be consistent with the rest of the business districts and provide some more flexibility for future redevelopment opportunities. And we also included suggestions to revise the parking standards, incorporating mixed uses into permitted uses in the business districts, providing provisions for some sustainable standards to help capture stormwater runoff in the residential and commercial areas of the city. So based on all of the input we received, a vision statement was drafted. This is a collection of a few sentences that encompasses where Gross Point Park wants to be in the next 10 to 15 years. So I'll just read the statement to you. "Gross Point Park is a walkable, bike-friendly, sustainable, historic, diverse, and safe community. The city's residents, unique neighborhoods, and communities of quality businesses, community monies are its strongest assets. Collaboration and transparency are highly valued in our paramount successful implementation of this master plan." The last section of the master plan is the action plan. This, along with recommendations, chapter will be your most actively used portion of the plan. And you should reference this often, as well as update it frequently. The action plan will be your guidance for goals and strategies that includes prioritization of those steps, and also identifying who to partner with to achieve those goals. The table here shows the elements and goals that have been laid out in the plan. I'm not going to go into each one of these into greater detail. I think we could revisit those during our discussion tonight. If you want to look at certain ones, they can be found in the draft master plan document. And a lot of these I've already mentioned, as And a lot of these I've already mentioned as part of the recommendations portion of the presentation. These are split and organized by elements, which include neighborhoods, business districts, complete streets or transportation, sustainability, zoning, and fair investments. And each one of these goals is based on a collection of input received, as well as our own expertise and best practices. And then this is the adoption process for the master plan that I mentioned earlier. Tonight, planning commission should be taking action to recommend to city council to open up the public comment period for the draft plan. And then city council will direct staff to advertise a plan in public hearing and also provide it to other agencies, agencies, and cities. And then once the at least sixty-three day comment period is done, there will be a public hearing with planning commission, and then the final adoption can take place with city council being the last step in that process. So I just want to thank you for your time, the opportunity to work with you on this effort. And I'm happy to address any questions that the planning commission might have at this time. And I'm happy to also pull up the plan itself so we can look at certain sections that you might want to talk about in more detail.
Thank you so much, Anne Marie. I know we all really appreciate the time and effort that you and the team at MKSK have put into this. What I'd like to do is go through our role of commissioners and give everyone the opportunity to make comments, ask questions, and engage in any further discussion that the planning commission has in this first read of the master plan. So I am going to go in alphabetical order. So I will start with Commissioner Chesterton to see if you have any comments, questions.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lindsay. I actually do not have. I generated all of my questions and comments and supplied those as per your request. So I don't think there's really a need to take everyone's time tonight. I do, Anne Marie, I echo the thanks. This was a major lift. I'm excited that we are on this level of competency and especially getting a to-do list in terms of priorities. Just, I think, for a point of order for, not necessarily a point of order, but a point of clarification in terms of municipal master planning, I think for public that maybe would be on and others, if you could, or even if city manager Seisland would like to describe a couple of things that I think sometimes people get hung up on in master planning and recommendations from a zoning standpoint. With the adoption of this plan, the zoning ordinance would not get adopted as part and parcel. And if you want to expound on that, I think that's really important because I think that folks get a little nervous about if we adopt this master plan, that means that we're adopting law. That's not the case in this place. But, and then also, if you could speak to grandfathered or non-conforming, if someone had, if a project has been approved, if something is already in place, could you take a little bit of time describing grandfather clauses and what that means for businesses, organizations, and personal enterprises? And how would a zoning change affect them? You can answer that at the end, but I think it's just important. This is, these are typical misconceptions, and I just want to calm everyone's nerves about these major moves that we maybe are making in terms of making, having a formal master plan in place. And then I'll hold the rest of my comments for the end after I hear what the public has to say. And if you could just refer to my, the comments that I did in writing, that would be great. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Chesterton. City manager Seisland, do you want to take a moment to address any of the zoning issues that might be in concern to some of our residents that are watching in relation to the adoption of the master plan?
Yeah, so as Commissioner Chester Ten and Anne Marie Kirby and yourself have discussed, this is simply a, you know, with the adoption of this master plan eventually by the city council with the planning commission support, this is a guideline that we can look to within the city for updating our zoning standards. We have certainly seen, you know, at times that there's some zoning that we have currently that's still from about the nineteen fifty's that we need to update within Grosse Pointe Park. And we certainly are moving in the right direction with a good guideline and to, you know, the newer twenty-first century here. We do have an older housing stock. However, you know, with everything else, time has to change a little bit. And so the consideration done by MKSK and the commissioners and the public of what their needs are, you know, will be further discussed. And I know I'll be working closely with our building department and you as well, the planning commission, and moving forward with updating that zoning. So, you know, I'll be frank that I'm very excited. As city manager, working on new zoning is going to be a lot of fun and very helpful for the city as we move forward with future development. Those are my comments.
Thank you, city manager. I'm going to move on to Commissioner Coletta. If you have questions or comments that you'd like to share with us or questions for MKSK.
Thank you. And thanks, Anne Marie, and thanks, everybody else from MKSK. This is extremely thorough. I don't know if I expected it to be less thorough. I'm not quite sure what I expected, but it's so thorough. And it was, it was great to read. I'm excited about a lot of the recommendations related to walkability and just the ease of getting around the city and getting both that the city has to offer. I'm excited to hear the public comment and look forward to next steps. I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Coletta. Commissioner Evans, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Anne Marie as well and echo the appreciation for MKSK. I too am just very, very impressed with the thoroughness and the detail that's involved here. I thought it was very interesting to see just the different segments and demographics that it addressed in the areas of interest. Following up a little bit on Commissioner Chesterfield's comments, I am interested in the updated zoning as it relates to residential and some of the businesses. So I'm going to really look forward to seeing how that process develops. But again, just like to echo the appreciation and thanks for putting this together.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I'm going to move on next to Commissioner Sam Pear for any questions, comments. Commissioner Sam Pear, if you could unmute yourself if you have any comments. We will come back. I do not see her on the screen. So Commissioner Bataki.
Yeah, I think first of all, I just, I'll join with the chorus of my fellow commissioners and say thanks to MKSK. I mean, this is quite a heavy lift, and I think there's a lot of good content in the draft. I too did submit questions earlier. So I don't want to necessarily rehash those, but I think I do have a couple areas of clarification. So the future land use map, which was shown in this presentation, I think it was slide nine. I noticed that that, we received paper copies that we reviewed over the last week or so, those of us on the planning commission. And I believe the version of this future land use map in the printed copy is different from what's shown on the screen, as well as the elaboration in the draft that we saw. So it would be pages sixty-five through sixty-seven in the paper copies that we had. So is this the, is this the correct and official one that's on the screen that?
This is the one that is on the website. So the plan that's on the website is the news version. And we updated some of the things in the master plan based on your comments and the comments that Commissioner Chesterton sent us.
Okay.
So this is a reflection of those comments.
All right, thank you. So yeah, I did have some questions about that, but these changes sort of take care of those. Were there any other sort of material changes that you can recall from the printed copies that the planning commission got to the current version that's on the website?
Yeah, I have to go back through. I mean, I made updates to the residential guidelines and commercial guidelines for Commissioner Chesterton's comments that she sent over. I know there was some detailed comments she had on those, so we updated it based on her comments. And I think we tried to just clarify two other things. But I have to go back through my notes and see exactly all that we updated. But those are the main sections. I know we addressed this particular map and categories as well as those design guidelines.
Got it. Okay. And I guess if we go on to, I think it's maybe the next slide where we have the enhance or maybe a couple of slides over. Okay, that one. So I think this is a very important slide because as I read the plan, I saw how sort of the concepts on this slide kind of fed the recommendations, which then fed the action plan. So I don't want to get like totally in the weeds on this. I know the public's going to have a chance to review it. But one of the exercises I did when I was reviewing it was I took a look at the survey output from the residents, which was shown in one of the earlier slides, and I think it's on page thirteen or fourteen of the actual draft. And I tried to map the priority items for each business district that were identified in the survey, map them to this, this format here. And I'm seeing a lot of alignment, and I'm seeing some other cases where things that were identified as high priority in the survey are not necessarily classified as invest or what I would consider high priority in this sort of view. So for example, Jefferson, the priority items were developed vacancies, fix the facades, address the streetscape. So to me, that would map, you know, facades would map to general character on the left side of the graph. Streetscape would obviously map to streetscape, vacancies would map to occupancy. So, you know, when I read it and I thought if we were to be totally consistent with the survey output, I would expect to see dark blue on streetscape, general character and occupancy. And then I did a similar exercise, which I won't go through the details for the rest of them. So again, I'm seeing alignment with the survey, but in other cases, not so much. And I know you mentioned that this is a combination of the survey results and your expertise. Can you elaborate on sort of why you prioritize things like you did? So like, for example, bikeability on Jefferson is classified as an invest item, whereas the occupancy and general character are not, even though the survey output would seem to indicate those were high priority items for residents.
It's not necessarily a reflection of high priority, but rather what is an existing condition? And it might be easier if I go to... Everyone still see my screen or did I lose you guys?
I'm looking at the document now.
Okay, I just want to make sure and just kind of try to find. So we, this kind of elaborates more on what each of these categories calls upon and what the existing conditions are for each one. So it's not necessarily like prioritization of those. It's more like what is the existing conditions of that district? Is it, looking at the occupancy category, it's multiple versus fewer, vacant versus zero to few. So that's kind of how we categorized it in combination with looking at the input that was received from the public. Certainly, if there are categories that you feel should be shifted, we're happy to make those changes. But that was kind of the, our approach to this analysis.
Okay, so let me, let me ask a question then about sort of the, the change process to this draft. So if we vote to send it to council, and so the clock starts on the sixty-three day period, let's say we get some comments back, or we on the planning commission have our own comments. After the sixty-three days, are we able to make those changes and then adopt the revised document or with the sixty-three day, would a new sixty-three day period start to, to reflect public review of those changes?
Now, that sixty-three day period is for just this particular draft. And then you would say you want to make these other revisions in the public hearing meeting, if that makes sense. So you would say you want to adopt this plan, but with these updated provisions.
Okay.
You don't have to do another, right? You don't have to do another sixty-three day comment period. That's just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess another way to say it is we are empowered as a planning commission. After we get commentary through the course of sixty-three days, we can sort of workshop or make changes to the verbiage and then vote on that without further review and then adopt it. Is that, is that correct to say that?
Yeah, and you could have multiple meetings on it, but you would just have like the one public hearing. And then you could do a separate adoption meeting if you like. I think it just depends on how many changes and how comfortable you are with, with those changes.
Okay. All right. Well, like other commissioners, I think I'm, I look forward to receiving, you know, public input on the draft. And I hope we get a lot of participation from the public. It's, I'll say it's, it's a long doc. It's hundred and twenty pages, but it's not that hard to read. It's very, it's, it's very to the point. And so I look forward to receiving more comments from the public on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bataki. We are going to come back to Commissioner Sam Pear. I can see you, Commissioner Sam Pear. I cannot hear you, city manager Seisland. I don't know if.
Yeah, let me give it one shot here.
Okay, thanks.
Now?
We can hear you now.
Yeah.
I will, I will blame city manager Seisland then. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, well, sorry about the technical difficulties. Not sure what was happening there. But like others have said, thank you to Anne Marie and the team. This is an amazing start. And I feel like we've just taken, you know, twenty steps forward here. My only comment is just for us as a planning commission and, you know, as a city to start thinking as we move through the review phase, you know, towards the adoption phase, that we've had some fantastic recommendations here and many of which are high priority. And then we really need to make sure we're, you know, prepared and we have the plan in place to now actually execute on everything that we've been told, you know, is really a high priority and for our city and the other things below that. So it's not just putting it on the paper, but being prepared to execute and having, you know, those teams and those employees and those resources in place. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sam Pear. It was worth waiting to hear you. Council member Hodges. Would love to hear your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Lindsay. And also thank you to MKSK for all of its work getting us to this point. And I think it's probably appropriate to thank our city management team, too, knowing that you've had to work in tandem with our consultants and guide and direct that process and ensure that your professional insight is incorporated into this document so that you can properly guide us. So thank you for being an important part of that team. And as my peers have already said, I think tonight's all about our residents and making sure that they and our other stakeholders have the opportunity to be heard and highly encouraged to take a deep dive into this during this sixty-three day period so that us as planning commissioners can be well informed as to how to best move this forward. I won't late in the discussion now with some of the comments I have. I think it's better suited for other, otherwise. With that said, I will make one potential suggestion to whet the appetite of all. And that is a potential addition to this document could be a summary of all of our city-owned properties so that we understand how they could factor into future solutions. So that is one substantive thing in addition to a number of other. Uh, so that is one um substantive thing in addition to a number of others that I would really like to get on the record um as a potential um solution empowering uh opportunity moving forward. And then just recommending that we effectively track all these changes to minimize confusion, but I'm going to assume Ms. Kirby that you've got all of that mastered um given the experience that you have, so I will close with that and just say that I'm looking forward to moving this from its nascent stage to its mature stage so that we can um move our community forward, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodges, I think that's a a great recommendation to add the list of city-owned properties. It'll give us some reference, especially when we look at um which of those properties are occupied and which are which are vacant. Um, I am going to uh just add a few comments myself, again, thanking Anne Marie, Nick and the entire team for their work on this document, it was um no, no easy task, that's for sure. And some of the things that I'm very excited about are the recommendations on improvements for design guidelines for residential and businesses, um directing some focus to our business districts. We've seen some wonderful improvements on Churchill in recent years, and it would be fantastic to see those developments continue into our other business districts. Um, another thing that I would kind of like to to tap on is a little bit of um some of the recommendations that I saw in terms of zoning updates, and again, I won't get too far into the weeds, but I was happy to see that um there were some updates to making recommendations on um childcare facilities. So we can make it a little easier for those who are looking for childcare and daycare to potentially open up some of those businesses here in the park, because we know that that's a top priority for our residents. Um, one of the things that I would like to um see, and I'm hoping that City Manager Sizeland can help be a liaison for us, uh, would love to hear input from kind of our stakeholders in the city. Uh, obviously, a lot of these recommendations have implications for DDA, for Tifa, um, Public Works and Public Safety. I had the opportunity to chat with Chief Gerald for a little bit yesterday. Um, he hasn't had a chance to get through the entire mass master plan yet, but uh in relation to some of these recommendations on roads and crossings, we want to make sure we're in alignment with things like our our safe roads, um, safe pathways to school. And make sure that we're in 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 tune with public safety and public works as so many of these recommendations will affect them. Um, City Manager Sizeland, I know we briefly spoke about this, but since we're going to be moving into a public, um, this this public hearing uh moving toward that in sixty-three days, which is which is a minimum, we can take a little longer if we need to. I would like to make a recommendation that uh for the planning commission, I think it would be helpful as we receive feedback from the public for us to kind of get into three smaller subcommittees, and we can break this master plan down a little bit and work in some small groups. So we have the chance to workshop this a little more, we can take input from residents and add some more um comments and concerns and a little bit of direction, so I just wanted to ask you, um, if that's something that we think we can do. Um, in groups, I think we can do that without uh having all of us together in a quorum. So that way we can work on our own time, whether it's in pairs or groups of three, and really do a bit of a of a deeper dive.
Yeah, so thank you, Chair Lindsay, um, as you stated too, in order not to have a quorum, you have to have less than four, so it would be uh as with our group, it would be two groups of three and one group of two. Uh, something certainly after this uh conversation, I'll talk with Anne Marie Kirby as well of how we could facilitate such, and I know a lot of those comments, uh, you know, they'll be forwarded to myself, and I had been forwarding them to Anne Marie, and what we can do then is take those comments and, um, you know, give them to each uh subcommittee of the planning commission uh for their additional input and comment, so I I welcome that opportunity and I can definitely talk with Anne Marie um about this more.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, City Attorney Shell, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
No, I do not have any comments, although I was pleased to hear that we did uh speak with the chief and make sure that we have public safeties input on some of these, especially pedestrian and bike safety strategies.
Thank you, if there are no other comments, uh, City Manager Sizeland, I believe that we need to make a motion to send the master plan draft to city council so that they can begin this formal sixty-three day process for public review. Is that correct?
Uh, that is my recollection, Anne Marie, is that correct?
Yep, so you'll wanna to make that formal motion, um, and then they they'll be able to authorize you to, for city staff to advertise the public hearing.
Okay, I humbly ask, would somebody like to make that motion to forward this on to the city council?
Uh, can we have a discussion quickly first? Um, I think um, uh, Commissioner Lindsay, I think I, is it possible for us to um do that after public comment?
Uh, we can certainly, no. It does not mess us up, we uh are be, we would be moving on to old business and then public comment on non-agenda items, but certainly if there are members of the public that would like to comment, I think that would be appropriate, so.
I think considering the possibility of um workshopping more nuanced factors, if there's anything that uh we feel that we can um put a finer point on, or if there's anything, I wouldn't want to be so bold as to assume that we caught everything, if there's anything the public would like to comment on, so possibly if we could do uh make that motion at the end of the meeting, I think that that would probably make the most sense. If if uh anyone else disagrees or has another thought on that, I'm welcome to think about it another way.
No, I thi- I think that would be in order, uh.
Okay.
City man, cit- city manager Sizeland, can we switch the public comment and old business on our agenda?
Yes, we can do that, so I will now, uh, we will now move to a public comment of uh non-agenda items. And I'll see if we have anyone in the queue. Uh, Chair Lindsay, I have no public comment.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Sizeland. Uh, I think we will then come back to uh motion to send the master plan draft to city council so that they can begin the formal sixty-three day minimum process for a public review period. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to do so?
Some move.
Okay, Commissioner Coletta, do we have a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Chesterton, thank you. All in favor of moving the master plan draft to city council, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, and we will formally move the master plan draft to the city council so they can open the public review period. The next item on our agenda is old business. City Manager Sizeland, do we have any old business to discuss this evening?
Uh, thank you, Chair Lindsay, so yes, um, I'll provide an update, uh, we did have, I believe it was about uh about two and a half weeks ago, uh, there was an invite from the uh development over on at the end of Wayburn in the fourteen-hundred block. I know several of my fellow commission members were there uh to attend with the developer uh as they wanted to show us um their their planned development they had in the area, and so at this time, I'm working with Mr. Terry Brennan and Mr. John Jackson and McKenna in the review of any updates that they may have uh to their development. And as soon as that's ready, um, I'll be calling or asking a special meeting um of the planning commission for consideration of of that development on Wayburn, so uh with that said, that's the only item of old business I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, the City Manager Sizeland. Do any of the other commissioners have old business? I see a hand raised with Commissioner Chesterton.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindsay, uh, City Manager Sizeland, I again, I do apologize, I wasn't able to make that walkthrough. Can you um give us a quick update on what the process would be? I know that um based on the reading the minutes from the last meeting um and 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 from my own recollection that we tabled that, what would be there next? I know that there were uh several variances that were not flagged. Um, what would be the appropriate process? I believe they would not come to us first. It would be going to ZBA, can you tell me what the appropriate um flow uh approval flow chart would look like?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Chesterton, so uh one of the things that we've asked of um uh the development team is that they need to provide us any and all updates to the building department in McKenna uh for review, especially from the initial comment of that meeting that we had that was uh tabled for their development. Uh, we are awaiting uh any all new uh documents for there. Uh, we did have a review um with McKenna and uh discussed some of those concerns that were brought up at that planning commission meeting, um, which it did note that there were several um uh planning commission considerations, and there is several ZBA city council uh that would also have to be done as well. And um I know actually you and I, we have to uh touch base again here, we're working on a uh a simple site plane review checklist that um I'm gonna be touching base, and I just did again with uh our Mr. Terry Brennan, uh who will be further assisting uh the city with that process, and so um at this moment, right now, the initial conversation is that we were going to go to the planning commission after the um new uh development uh drawings, if there are any, are brought to our attention. And then city council.
So they will be coming to this body uh with all variances being cleared, with no need for variances?
The the variances would be within there of what they have to further get approval from city council, the zoning board of appeals. So planning commission first, then ZBA.
Okay. Um, I guess that's probably something that this body can talk about um in terms of uh thinking more anecdotally, don't want to um belabor the this particular development on Wayburn. Um, but uh an understanding of this body approving site plans with conditions, um, knowing that they need to uh have variances that are cleared up. Again, the order of that seems uh a little odd, I would think that this body would look at them once those variances have been cleared. Um, so ideally, um, and I believe that MKSK put that in the master plan in terms of a review of the approval process uh for uh easy site plan review checklist is probably something that we can certainly take a look at with this group as a to-do list. And I'm 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 open uh to a discussion with my fellow commissioners in terms of your comfort le- level with that. Uh, but if we were given a site plan to review, um, and we have to imagine that all of the hurdles and the variances were cleared and then approve it to be sent on to ZBA, uh, seems um a little, a little out of order, and I know that's the way things have been. Uh, we've been doing it for decades, I would just offer that I think that there's a better path forward for that process. Thank you, that's all I have.
City manager, I will jump in just to address the question that that Commissioner Chesterton had. I believe the reasoning why that particular site plan was coming back to the planning commission was um prior to having clearance of any variances was that they would be seeking a special use permit, am I remembering that correctly, city manager? And that was the recommendation that they would come to planning commission first, then ZBA, and then potentially back to planning commission for a final site plan review. That was my understanding.
The development team has discussed uh with the city in in relation to the current zoning as is that uh, you know, that they are looking at potentially that they may have a hardship in in consideration of some of the uh of requirements that are of the planning commission, and so there is, there is a talk that maybe it does go through a special use, as you said, uh Chair Lindsay. And then, yes, we would then go over to the ZBA afterwards uh for that. Um, so yes, you're correct.
Okay, so I think, and I, that might clarify a little bit for Commissioner Chesterton as to why why that path seemed to be out of order, I think that was the recommendation um from our planning consultant, that they would come to us first. Um, city manager, if we are going to be considering that, should we be looking at the calendar to set that date just as we're moving into November and December with holidays and everyone has uh I know work commitments, family commitments, and there there does need to be a public, I believe, a two-week period for that particular special use to be posted, if that's what the developer is seeking.
Uh, thank you, so yes, I'm looking at the calendar right now. Um, looks like the commission, we've been typically meeting on Tuesdays. Um, you know, what I, what I would recommend is that we could potentially, um you know, we don't have to say this tonight, but I can certainly send this out to the commission in a poll, maybe we look at um sometime, uh, it could be, uh, let's see here. Excuse me for a second. We could potentially do it, uh we could either do the ninth, sixteenth, or the twenty-third of November, probably the sixteenth would give us the most amount of time, but I'll send around a uh poll to the uh commission uh for their consideration and and also giving the developer uh target date.
That would be great, thank you, and then that would fulfill our four meetings of the year, and hopefully at our next meeting, then we can take a look at setting our dates for twenty, I can't believe I'm saying twenty-twenty-two, to have those set on the calendar, obviously, we'll be coming back to the draft of the master plan, and we'll have, we'll have work to do. Okay. We are drawing toward the end of our agenda, so I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners or if council member Hodges, city attorney or city manager have any further comments that you would like to share?
Now that this time, thank you all, and uh thanks to Anne Marie Kirby and her team for taking time out of their uh night tonight.
Thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys and excited to see final plan it goes.
Thank you, Anne Marie. If there are no further comments, then do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
Oh, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Vitacchi, and I believe the second was council member Hodges. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you to members of the commission, and thank you to the public for joining us this evening.
Everybody have a great day.